The meeting in Sayreville Board of Education, April 13th, 2010. Mr. Board Secretaries, this meeting has been really important according to the Open and Public Meeting Act.
Yes, it has.
Everybody please stand to pledge.
Go for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
I apologize, I'll follow the agenda. Mrs. Banker.
Here.
Mr. Bishama.
Here.
Mr. Syed.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Limbo.
Here.
Mrs. Stratten.
Here.
And Mr. Mackin.
Present. Dr. Alfano, favorite portion of the agenda presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mackin. Mr. Warner, would you please come up? Mr. Mackin, would you come up? And I just would like to congratulate the bowling team. They did a three-peat. Most teams could never do that except for the Yankees and a few other teams that I know of, but that's really a tremendous accomplishment and I want to thank you guys. It's an awesome job, three-peat, Division III, actually Group III, and we almost won the Amena Champions again, but we'll do that next year, right? We're going to go for the quad.
I'm pulling that right.
We're going for the quad. But I'm going to give Mike the floor and this way he can talk a little bit about his great team. I'll ask these young men to come up here and stand up here while I say a few words about them. As Dr. Alfano said, three-time Group III State Champions, first team ever in the history of New Jersey High School Bowling to win three group championships in a row. Came in second in overall state championship and ended the season as the number-two ranked team in the entire state after being number-one the previous two years. And all of this after we lost, I think it was six players to graduation, all-state players to graduation last year or so. These young men really did a nice job. We will be back next year. I don't want to be cocky, but we have a lot of guys coming back, so we expect to be back here next year to make it four in a row. We're losing one senior, Glenn Sauer. And these gentlemen did an excellent job, and I'll tell you what, I say this every year when we're invited here, not only do they do a great job on the lanes, but more importantly, they do a great job of representing Sayerville, representing our school, and representing the name of the school that they have on the back of their shirts. And to everyone here, I think that that's one of the most important things. So, guys, job well done, great job, and Dr. Alfano, Mr. Mackin, we'll see you next year. Mr. Mackin, do you want to give the award?
Just a couple of your excellence. The Sayreville Warhammer High School Bowling Team, outstanding achievement in bowling, Group III State Champions. And I've observed your team and the things you said on how they conduct themselves. I've always said that attitude reflects leadership, so that's certainly a reflection of the coach's performance. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Make sure you get a good picture of them and send one to me so I can put it on my wall of fame, alright ladies?
Alright guys, ready? One, two, three, smile!
Awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And the correspondence, everybody should receive the monthly technology and monthly maintenance work order reports. Anybody have any questions, comments about those reports?
Just one comment, I notice we got them this time in paper. Was that just an oversight or did we go back to killing trees?
No, just that the meeting was this evening and I'm being away for the week, I wanted to make sure everyone did receive them.
Okay.
Lots of it. We also received the minutes of the month 6th, excuse me, month 2nd, March 16th, March 22nd, and March 30th meetings. Anybody have any questions or comments, additions, deletions from the minutes? Mrs. Banker.
Well, I got, this was at my request, I did request for that, the letter from Mr. Rogroby included in the minutes. You mentioned the letter, but I actually wanted the letter included as part of the minutes under correspondence. Do you just note it under correspondence there?
I didn't, I can include it into the minutes as soon as I get them out the other day.
Oh, so you just didn't have a copy?
Yeah, I don't have a copy.
Yeah, I just so that it's on file if anybody's to look as to where we discussed that we had it. Now, the other question I had, just may, when I read the closed session minutes and I know you take attendance and you mark it in there, you didn't note in these minutes when people leave. Like, a lot of times people leave and then come back because they have to leave, but that's not more down.
If you like, I can keep that. I've never done it in the best, but if that's something you like, I could definitely keep that.
Well, I just think it's good for the people that have to leave that, you know, they know that they weren't there for it.
I certainly wrote the petition.
Give us a applause and a little naivety. Okay, so if no one else has any concerns or comments about the agenda, I'll take a motion for the final exception.
So, with Mr. Banker's conclusions.
Second motion.
Rule call, please. Mrs. Banker.
Yes.
Mr. Bishama.
Yes.
Mr. Syed.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Limbo.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackin.
Yes, with the understanding that we'll have these, if not already posted online, so it's hopefully by Friday they'll be there. And with all the attachments, including the letter that she mentioned.
Well, I need that, but I don't have that letter yet.
You've got the letter.
Okay. I will do that. Send me an email or remind me of that. We have no student council representative for tonight, no parent involvement committee representative, no attorney's report, and any district highlights.
Yes, we do. Kudos to the Arlett Elementary School for their Pennies for Peace program, beginning with Dr. Seuss's birthday on March 2nd and an annual visit from the Cat in the Hat. This year, their Read Across America celebration extended beyond our nation's borders to the countries of Pakistan and Afghanistan as they join millions of other children and schools in their Pennies for Peace program. Pennies for Peace supports the Central Asia Institute created by Dr. Greg Morrison, author of Three Cups of Tea, and his efforts to build schools in these two war-torn countries in order to promote peace through education. On Wednesday, March 3rd, Assemblyman Craig Coughlin of District 19 visited Arlett Elementary School. His visit included a reading, reading a book for Read Across America. Assemblyman Coughlin read to Mrs. Commerford's third-grade class. There was a discussion about how government works which coincided with the new student governing committee Arlett School has organized. On Friday, March 5th, over 300 Truman Elementary School students in grades 8 through 3 participated in a community service project, Jump Rope for Heart. This event gave the children an opportunity to benefit from the physical activity as well as do something to help others. The jumpers were an enthusiastic group and a fun time decided by all. Special thanks to Ms. Allison Sensei, physical education teacher, for organizing and implementing this worthwhile activity for the students. Also, thanks to the PTO for their involvement and help in this project. The school raised $4,112 with the American Heart Association. Our heartfelt thank you to the students, parents, and staff for their support and another successful community service project. The students of Team 4-4 in the Samson Upper Elementary School participated in the Celebrate New Jersey writing contest. We are proud to announce that Arshita Ramjishan and Emily Lohman wrote articles that were selected as best of the best among fourth graders in the state. Our Arshita's article about Judy Blume and Emily's article about the New Jersey Devil were selected from a pool of over 7,000 applicants. The girls will be honored at an award ceremony at Monmouth University on April 30th. The two students should be commended for their interest in New Jersey and exceptional writing abilities. Thank you also to Ms. Janet Us and Ms. Kelly Lynch Ortiz teachers for their help in this endeavor. To view the articles written by these students, visit the website, celebratenj.org. Congratulations to the following student athletes and coaches for having won awards during the winter season. In basketball, boys' basketball, Tariq Jackson, All-White Division, Girls, Jessica Kittriss, All-Red Division. Bowling, White Division Champs, NJSIAA Group III Champs, three years in a row. NJSIAA Tournament of Champions Runner-Up and Star Ledger Central Jersey Team of the Year, Star Ledger Second Ranked Team in the state. Eric Applegate, All-Conference, All-White Division. Philip Bailey, All-White Division. Wayne Bieber, All-White Division. Anthony Nichols, All-White Division. And Glenn Sauer, All-White Division. In the Girls, Kristy Bieber, GMC Individual Tournament Qualifier. Our Swimming Team, White Division Sportsmanship Winner, Boys, Peter Durback, All-Conference, White Division. Girls, Maureen McKenna, All-Conference, All-White Division. And Shannon McKenna, All-White Division. In Winter Track, White Division Champions, White Division Relay Champion in Girls. Boys, Corin Klein, All-White Division. Dakeen Coles, All-White Division. Amika Easy, All-White Division. David Fleming, All-White Division. Gregory Orellola, All-White Division. Jude Sepuro, All-White Division. And Zankis Wright, All-White Division. Girls, Sarah Barnes, All-White Division. Janice Frontero, All-White Division. And White Division Coach of the Year, Gerald Carney. In Wrestling, also White Division Champions, Michael Balling, All-White Division. Tyler Karla, All-White Division. Anthony Geiger, All-White Division, District Champion. Christopher Pearson, All-White Division. Gino Shiano, All-White Division. Gary Saraday, Region Champion 5, District Champion 20, All-White Division. And White Division Coach of the Year, Anton Adaberry. And we have one more that I will turn over to Mrs. Bowden.
Yes, we've got a trailer this evening, and I read this highlight regarding a very important person who was at Wilson School. Wilson Elementary School is very proud of Michael Gabber, our lead custodian, for his quick thinking and assertive approach and pure dedication to the district as he handled several emergency situations that were caused by the hurricane with no name. Mike came in on that Saturday when he was made aware of the ceiling leaking in the principal's office, purchased materials to prevent any further damage, and protected everything he could from any of the, any more damage. The next day, Mike was listening to his police scanner, heard a call of an alarm at the building, and once again, he came to the rescue. Upon arrival at 6:00 a.m. that Sunday, Mike found water pouring out of the ceiling and again went above and beyond the call of duty by ensuring that the furniture and the electric equipment moved from harm's way and set up an alternate office space for the principal. Mr. Gabber's response to this situation far exceeded his job responsibilities. However, his actions are very indicative of his outstanding work ethic, his commitment to Wilson School, and his role as our school's caretaker. Thank you, Mike, you are truly our hero. Would you stand up so we can give you a round of thank you? Please do.
I don't want you getting hooked up, George. Mike, I also want to thank you, you did a great job. Matter of fact, George's office never looked better. Now you can come to my office and start redecorating mine. I want to pull up all the rocks as well. Congratulations, thanks, Mike. We really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Dr. Alfano, please take us through the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mackin. Buildings and grounds, there were three use of buildings, one at the, actually, the Sayreville Warhammer High School, one for band camp, one for a football camp, and one for the use of a Indian cultural event. There's also an extra one, I have to apologize, this hospital was out, she was injured, and there's a couple of use of buildings and a few other extracurricular that I'm going to have to approve verbally if you don't mind, because I want to make sure that these get through today because I don't want to do them graduate actively. The Board of Education has requested to approve the use of the Sayreville Warhammer High School auditorium and cafeteria for the History Honor Society inductions on Wednesday, April 28th to 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Again, that's say, the History Honor Society inductions, so my apologies, but there's a couple more too, and I wanted to make sure that I got it. Any questions with the first one? I'm sorry, hold on a second. April 28th, 6:00 to 9:00.
I want a question. Did we get an answer back on the other Indian school?
Uh, no, I haven't, we did not, we sent it to them, but they never got back. With Section 2, Finance, regular resolutions or?
Dr. Alfano, the buildings, the one we talked about, for the middle school play, the use of the cafeteria.
It's later on, it's on the extracurriculars.
It's a go.
Okay. Finance, don't ask me how we figured that out, some comments, something's on the extracurriculars, something's on, I'm trying to change this, but I try to let the ladies do their thing. Finance, A to L of our regular resolutions, M is a disposal of equipment, there's a web based training there for Mr. Syed, and there's an addition on the addendum of O, which is a placement of a transferred student, postponed student, to the Ocean Cabinet.
Dr. Carney?
Yes, sir.
Are the tables, are that ones around here thrown all over the ground?
Yes.
Can we get rid of them? I mean, now that we have them.
That's what we wait, we need to approve them. I would have got rid of them a long time ago, but maybe you don't have it. I need to stay in the high end as the mandated core members. I was going to ask you that, but I figured you would. Section 3, Personnel, on paid medical leave, for a job coach, a job for a job coach, a substitute, for, no, certificated. D is on the addendum, and that is the contracted Teamster 17-day holiday list. Any question with Section 3? With none moving to 4, certified. Retirements, Jerry Carney, who I worked with and Ms. Sullivan worked with for many years, we're going to, I told Jerry this time, make sure he stays retired, yeah, because he did it the first time and he came back in about two days, so, in all due respect, Jerry's great and I wish him the best, same thing with Ma, I wish her all the best, grade 2 teacher at Truman School. I never had the pleasure of working with her, but I wish her the best in their retirement. A few resignations, these are individuals that are on maternity, so we get back in April, later on they're returning, so we just put them down as resignations and we take them off the rolls. There's a few pregnancy leaves, as well as professional days, which run from pages 5, 6, and 7. There's a resolution for me to be on the Middlesex Regional Education Services Commission as a commissioner, which is at the end of page 7. Page H, I'm sorry, letter H, I'm going to let Ms. Sullivan talk a little bit about the process, and she can also talk about the winners and the fact that we're also going to have a luncheon.
This year, as we have in years past, a district selection committee was put together to review the nominations for each school's Teacher of the Year. The committee met, read the nominations without the names on them, they're all anonymous to the committee members, and then cast their votes as a district committee with representation from all schools and all grade levels, and the final selections were the teachers listed in your board report. For Arlett School, it was Laura Roman. For Eisenhower School, Christine Kiernan. Truman School was Laura Cozy. Wilson School was Kelly Sibbergen. Samson Upper Elementary School was Jennifer Menue, and I might note that this is the second time that Jennifer has received this award, and that's quite outstanding. For the middle school, it was Helen Trubaszewski, and for the high school, it was Lori Rosen. These individuals will be honored at, Joseph, this doesn't like to work tonight, will be honored at a gala that the SEA is planning, and as well as a special luncheon that's sponsored by the superintendent and myself.
And we will recognize him in upcoming board meetings.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let me write that down, one of the things I have to do. I and J, there's a new program, and again, I would like to commend Ms. Duffy. We are really bringing back a tremendous amount of Abbott District placements. This is a very innovative program that's going to run after school, and we are, and we're putting it in slower because, obviously slower, a lot of the children are gone now, and we want to keep that as a school, so that's going to be, we don't want to call it an alternative or an interim program, so we call it Twilight Program. All we need right now is approval from the county superintendent, which we plan on getting. Once again, this is a very innovative program, this will probably save the district over the course of the year, next year, once this really gets rolling, over $100,000 to $200,000.
Can you explain this a little bit?
And Ms. Duffy, I was just going to say, Ms. Duffy can talk a little bit about the Twilight Program.
It's going to run from 12:30 to 4:30, and it's for students who would be placed in a different placement, an interim placement, or even a long-term placement. And what we're going to do is have a mix of students within those classes, and they're going to get all their core content, area instruction within those four hours, which is a legal school day. So, within those four hours, we're going to continue with the instruction that they would have gotten if they were in their regular classrooms in Sayerville, in Sayerville Middle School. So, right now, we're piloting it in the middle school, and hopefully it'll be a success, and we'll see where it will go.
Is this an extension to the regular school there, or is it still?
It's not an extension, for these students, who will start at 12:30 and then to 4:30. They'll be in alternate hours, and it won't be an alternate curriculum, the curriculum will be the same, so.
And what grade, grade 6?
It's grade 6 for babies, the middle school population. Anybody in need of those kind of services can receive them now and so later.
Ms. Sullivan brings up a good point, there's another resolution later on that basically trues the program from 12:30 to 4:30. Mr. Schneider's just being reassigned, or adjourned, that he will be up on 12:30, 2:30, so he's just going, just sort of like somebody being transferred from one to another, and you'll see later on. But I think this is a very innovative program, and I understand one thing, it's going to keep me on my toes because it's in my, in my school, and I'm really excited about it because we are going to take a very active role. If this takes off, this could go from grade 6 all the way up to grade 12.
For middle school, yes.
So, we're really taking a look at that, because, not to mention, Ms. Sullivan just worded to my attention that, you know, as soon as somebody has an infraction, after five days, we have to provide home instruction. This program immediately will take into consideration that concern, and then subsequently, we would not be put into a liability situation that we're not providing services.
So, it would be home instruction in school?
Actually, much more innovative than that.
I like that.
Well, it's a little bit more innovative than that, and we're really looking to make it very technical as far as computers, maybe bring in some online stuff.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to have, as it stands now, one computer per child, so the learning will be very individualized, and it will allow us to accommodate those several grade levels, and I think it's going to be a very strong program. And you mentioned home instruction. When kids are put on home instruction for disciplinary reasons, you know, a quote only requires one hour a day, two hours a day, max. This is going to really, hopefully, continue their education appropriately and get them into a place where they're going to return to the school full-time and get the benefit of their education.
I have two questions. To transportation, how are they getting there?
We'll provide transportation, through a shedlock, we've been scheduled.
Cool, okay. And how are the students chosen?
Well, they're not chosen.
They're selected.
They're selected, right, it's a selection which isn't random, and it's for students who would be put out of school were it not for this program, you know, as I say, an interim placement, this is a much better solution for them. It's in a more controlled environment than we currently can send them to, so I think it'll be a better result.
I would pose for that, I think that's great, keep it up here.
Which building will this be closed?
Hello.
Is it just one class, so Frank Schneider's, it's one class?
It's one class right now, yes.
So, he's going to be there from 12:30 to 2:30, and somebody else is going to come from 2:30 to 4:30?
2:30, 4:30, yes.
It's a different subject, is that, different people?
Yes, yes. And, yeah, and we'll rotate, in that 2:30 to 4:30 spot, rotate blocks of language arts and dance, so.
And that's all they get? Like, they don't do anything before 12:30, they come to school at 12:30?
They come to school at 12:30, yes. Yes, because there are some criteria in order to run one of these programs, and, you know, we're running alternate hours, and we're looking far to be successful.
So, these are students who would, I'm sorry, go.
Is it, is Phys Ed at home?
Uh, no.
Okay, that I found it.
No, and if students were on home instruction, they wouldn't receive Phys Ed? Uh, no.
These are students who would normally place that addition.
Right.
Yes, yes.
To disciplinary hearing, no.
Yes.
Thanks for your talk.
Got you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, again, Ms. Harbatt, there's a couple of questions, this is a certification issue, this is not a new employee, okay? We'll discuss that. L is a substitute teacher. Any questions with Section 5? Uh, Section 4, I'm sorry. Policy, Section 5, there's no report. Section 6 is curriculum, there's a new kindergarten student that we have to by law. Here's the Twilight Program and its whole resolution, that it will run from 12:30 to 4:30, and we need the county executive superintendent to fill that out, so extensive application that we're filling out for that. Special services, use of the different placements, et cetera, and services that are being provided on the city. D is added to the addendum, and just to make sure, I wanted to make sure that we got these in today. Promotion ceremony at the middle school will be the 23rd of June, which is a Wednesday. High school graduation is a Thursday, June 24th, which is the 180th day. The last day for students is also the 24th, and the last day for teachers is the 25th. Any questions with Section 6? With none moving to 7. We've got a car wash, an abundance of activities from the middle school, the Sayreville Symphony Orchestra is taking a trip. D, E, and F are on the agenda, on the addendum, and again, that's a book bingo night at Wilson. Mr. Mackin, O, is a pancake breakfast, okay, which is on the addendum. And F is an international festival being sponsored by the Eisenhower Elementary School. Add, one more, please, add G, which is, again, this is an extra one, that, again, I apologize, this is under Ms. Hospital gave to me at the last minute, and again, I don't want to not get these in. The Board of Education has requested to approve the following S U E S activities to be held in the gymnasium. First is Spring Concert on Tuesday, April 20th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Again, that's the Spring Concert, Tuesday, April 20th, 2010, from 6:30 to 8:00. And the second is the Family Quiz Show, we don't want to lose that, on Thursday, April 29th, 2010, from 6:30 to 8:30. Again, that's the Spring Concert, Tuesday, April 20th, 6:30 to 8:00, and the Family Quiz Show, Thursday, April 29th, from 6:30 to 8:30. And I apologize once again, but I wanted to make sure we got those in.
Dr. Alfano?
Yes, sir.
7 E.
Yes, sir.
That is Sunday, April 20th.
Correct.
Not Saturday.
That's correct.
It says Saturday.
I'm sorry, I know, I will make that change.
Okay. Now, do we have custodial staff on duty on Sundays?
No. We usually give them one shot that we take, if it's an activity like this, that's a fundraiser for an activity, we give them one shot. After the first shot, because I asked Ms. Hospital that exact question, I said, what do we normally do? So, we give them one, so they'll get one.
This is middle school.
Correct. And they're doing a real nice service for these youngsters that have been put in on this planet.
Okay, so Sunday is?
It is Sunday, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
My pleasure.
Any questions with Section 6? With none moving to 7? I'm sorry, that was Section 7. Moving to 8, we have transportation requests and approximately 16 trips. I would like to say one thing before I close. This is Ms. Stratten's last meeting. I want to thank Ms. Stratten for all her hard work, effort, and really her dedication and loyalty to the district, and very much appreciate everything that you've done. I will invite you to the reorganization because it's sort of like the passing of the torch, so to speak, where we have a little something for you at that meeting, and once again, I know I speak for Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Bowden, and Ms. DeAndrea, we thank you for your service. This is really not a very easy job, and you're certainly not getting paid enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, just find a new board discussion on these other items before opening up the vote. Nothing? Nothing very, at this time, I'd like to open up to the public, if you have any questions or comments on the agenda items only, be mindful, I will open up again to the public for any business that may come before the board. At this time, anybody has any comments or questions on the agenda, please, must state your name and address the record. None, I will close the public portion for the agenda items only. At this time, I will accept a motion, would the acceptance file the superintendent's report?
So, sorry.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Baccam?
Yes.
Mr. Vashada?
Yes.
Mr. Sayet?
Yes, with the exception of voting.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lembo?
Yes.
Mr. Stratten?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Yes. On the background information, Touchdown Club advertising during football games, who is?
My, uh, my better half.
The tough guy.
Hey, take my mic.
Please.
Please.
Yeah. The Touchdown Club has requested of the principal athletic director, and has their approval announced to the Board of Education, for the privilege and right to use school property, namely, the fencing around the field, to place advertisements printed on vinyl banners that will be used as a fundraising activity for our football players. We're looking for more direction, if that is something you would allow. Currently, our policy does not permit such advertising or concessions. If you would like to entertain that proposal by those parents, we would have to come up with a concession agreement that we would work on with our attorney, as well as a policy that would permit fundraising by recognized parent organizations for the purposes of supporting supplementing programs for our children. So we're looking for more direction.
I've seen that a lot of schools.
Yeah, exactly. I don't see anything wrong with that. Many other schools, it's a fundraising, you know, like Pop Warner.
My only concern would be the advertisers themselves, are we going to stay away from drug companies, alcohol stuff, things like that?
Again, that's the reason why we would have to write the specifications into the policy, and as well as the concession agreement, and we would work on the attorney with them. I don't think the parents involved would have a problem with that.
What if, what about for other events that are held in our field, it's a multi-purpose field, if the banner's having a competition, would they be coming down, or?
They have agreed to put the banners up one hour before the football game, and take them down one hour after the football game, so they wouldn't be up permanently, which is such a fabulous idea.
You could put them out my window.
The Touchdown Club, I've witnessed them for the last four years, my daughter was cheerleader, and they do great things for the kids, I go to the banquets every year, and, you know, especially, the kids walk away with things, mementos that they'll cherish the rest of their life, and I know that's done by a lot of volunteers. It's always been a class organization. I, you know, to me, this is a no-brainer, if they want to do that.
All right, so we will move forward with the concession agreement that will be drawn up by the attorney, and a written policy that would outline the specifications.
Does any board member have any other comments or concerns or issues?
I, what it will do is, I'll ask around to some of my, you know, the districts, I'll send out the old superintendents, I'm sure there's a policy out there that governs this. Do you know any other town that does this? So they must have a policy on it.
Most of them are permanent, we're not looking for permanent.
Right.
Or most of them are.
Well, if they have, if they have it, then they must have a policy, even if they're permanent, so I'll ask if they have.
Rictors, I know they have it, that's where we got the idea from.
Rictors, all right, don't.
Edison, Scaterwell, the gangway games we've been to, I've seen them.
I'll ask, I'll send them out to somebody, and I can, I'll even ask county superintendent.
Good idea, we should have thought of that.
Too late.
So once again, they're not asking for permanent concessions.
Understand. Gotcha. That was an easy one.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark, delegate to New Jersey School Board Association.
I was on the phone with a friend of mine, and the executive director of the New Jersey School Boards happened to be in attendance, and there were some concerns raised about what's happening, about some of the words coming out of Trenton, and one of those was our governor urged all voters in New Jersey to vote down his school budget, where there wasn't wage concessions by the Teachers Association. And I had a concern about it. Late this afternoon, the New Jersey School Board Association issued the following press release, all board members have been given a copy, and it's online at W W W dot N J S B or, N J S B A dot org, so I'd just like to read it real fast. Governor Christie made a recent announcement that voters should reject proposed school budgets in districts where teachers have not agreed to a wage freeze. Assessing proposed budgets on a basis of whether or not teachers agree to a wage freeze is neither fair nor accurate. It ignores substantial efficiencies that boards such as ours have incorporated into the budgets, even when the teachers' union did not agree to wage concessions. N J S B A supported the governor's call for a wage freeze, and we urge unions to cooperate with school boards in reopening contracts. However, on April twentieth, voters should base their decisions on all of the cost efficiencies in proposed budgets, and, more importantly, educational programs and needs. N J S B A surveys indicate that over ninety percent of the proposed school district budgets reflect layoffs of staff, and two-thirds will cut extracurricular programs. Substantial numbers of school boards are turning to subcontracting and other methods to preserve education programs. A large number also have received wage concessions from administrators and non-teaching staff. In addition, the governor's comments do not take into account practical consideration, which is Sayerville, too. Over one-third of the state school districts are now in the process of negotiating contracts that cover the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school year. Therefore, voters in more than two hundred and sixty school districts won't even know on April twentieth whether or not the board and the union have achieved a wage freeze. So, in essence, the New Jersey School Boards, and us, urge citizens to vote on April twentieth, and to make informed decisions on proposed school budgets. Our budget's open to the public, if there's any questions about what's in it, what's not in it, please ask us, please ask an administrator, please ask your principal, ask teachers, we'll be glad to give you the truth about how efficient Sayerville is.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any comments from the board? On the discussion, we have reorganization meeting at the twenty-seventh, is that due to this morning?
Yes, just me directing from the board by time, in place. Oh, here, in place. Seven-thirty is the usual time for board meetings, right? Do we want to do that? Were you mentioning about starting possibly earlier?
Normally, normally, the meetings are at six-thirty, but when we're closed, we start open, we close.
Does anybody have any problems starting it at six-thirty, the reorganization meeting? Does that, remember, that includes swearing in the new board members?
I like systems.
So we start at?
We got public portion?
Sorry, public portion at six-thirty.
Right, sure, okay. If we have to go in the clothes.
If we have to go in the clothes, we'll do it after the fact, so. Mr. Vashada, okay?
I'm up, my seat's up, you know.
Well, you're still here.
Still have to go down.
I have no problem.
Okay. That's a bad attitude. Ms. Baccam? You okay with six-thirty? Mr. Clark, how, your seat's up, too?
I'm just saying, I know it's time, so I'll leave my calendar open.
Mr. Lembo? Okay, so eighteen, six-thirty it is.
I'll, Ms. Mackinow, we normally do it by, you know, little call phone. If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I make a motion for a meeting to be held, a reorganization meeting to be held on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten, cafeteria, six-thirty P M.
I accept that motion.
Jesus, you. Mrs. Baccam?
Yes.
Mr. Vashada?
Yes.
Mr. Sayet?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinow?
Yes, I think so. On the discussion, I have one item, Dr. Alfonso, the May fourteenth, we had planned to do an open house, a kind of officially christen this construction of the high school, at the same time dedicate the military wall of honor that is in the A Wing. I guess, how far are we along in the planning as far as notifying, sending letters out to the borough council and that type of? Well, let me start off, are we in agreement that that's the date? Do you want to do it?
That's fine. I just need to know what, basically, I have all the left, it's not, that's not the issue. It's just a question of what time do you want it to start? And I'm assuming I will be barbecuing and stuff like that?
Well, it's Mr. Video, sir.
Well, the other kind of issue is, is how are we going to fund? Committee?
What's that?
You know, we're going to fund it.
What do you mean?
Unfortunately, the board's going to have to pay for any expenditures that we're going to do, can't be paid by the board.
Yeah, we'll donate from our pockets, the board wants to do that.
Whatever we decide to do, we can only do a certain amount.
Well, this was a start of a time, that we want to do it late enough for people to come.
Well, we have to, too, because we'd also want to make sure that all the staff is able to go, too. If we do it seven o'clock, it might, it might, this staff.
How about five o'clock?
Five o'clock is fine with me, six o'clock, whatever.
Five o'clock barbecue, six dedication.
That's fine. That's fine with me.
Any board members have any issue?
What's the date?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth.
Friday night?
We'll be done early, mayor.
Five for, five for dinner, it's okay. And Doc, I don't think your microphone's working.
What else is not?
Okay, lastly, on the discussion, if the May fourteenth is done, the district officially received a letter. As you recall, about a year and a half ago, the board voted unanimously to request a junior ROTC program here in the high school. We submitted applications to all the armed services, and we heard back from the Air Force this week. They're sending a lieutenant colonel coming up from Alabama to do a assessment of the district, looking at the schools, I've talked to administrators, I plan on being there as well. I, I would be disingenuous at best if I said I didn't influence the process.
Did we know anybody?
So happens to be somebody I served, but anyway. My argument to them was that the name of the school is Sayerville War Memorial High School. Its nickname is The Bombers, and its logo is a fighter aircraft, so I think your force is a, is a pretty good match for the school, so. That's a big meeting, because they're going to look at a bunch of things, and I will talk to Mr. Brown, because they'll be needing to speak with the guidance counselor, the president. What they want to do is gauge a feeling for the support of the program within the school. And I touted this as a, Sayerville is a veteran-friendly town, and you can just drive around town, and you can see that. Certainly, our military wall of honor that's established would be a place to show them as well, so. I think this is a good sign, and maybe we can get this on the fast track and see what happens.
Mr. Mackinow, would it be helpful if the board were to pass a formal resolution in support of the program?
Well, it's always a help, but the fact that we voted nine to zero to cooperate at the here, I think, speaks by itself, so. So that's going to happen May fourteenth. Tom Vashada has been interested in that, and asked a couple of times on updates, and I think that that's going to happen and be a reality here. I think it's very appropriate in the school, so.
So May fourteenth?
May fourteenth, that's the same day, but that's going to be during the day, probably, during the school day. So I'll be here as well as Mr. Brown and Dr. Alfonso, you make yourself available, too. It's usually a couple hours, and there's been, and certain things that they have to determine. And then, we'll be put on a list, and every year, Congress allocates so much money, and where you are on that list determines whether, what year your unit will open up, so we'll see what we can do to make sure we're in the top. I'll be there, so. So what happened? Anybody else have anything for any discussion? Yes, Mr. Clark?
I just want to echo Dr. Zafal's statement about Mrs. Stratten. Both of our families grew up together, our children started when they were babies, and now they're in college, so. I don't know if the public understands, our life as a board member, three years is an eternity, and it's a ton of sacrifice, so Maria, I just want to thank you on behalf as a friend and as a board member for sacrificing for those three years, so thank you.
Thank you for the nice comments.
Mrs. Baccam?
Could we, when you go to Sayerville K twelve, could we just put like a banner across the top, say, remember to vote April twelve, and put the times?
No problem.
Since the times are later, I know last year, that caused confusion, that we opened later.
Don't put April twelve.
That's April twentieth.
Twentieth.
No, twelve, I meant twelve o'clock.
Oh, okay, say it before, we don't want that banner.
No, the time, twelve, not the date, twelve.
Gotcha.
I have another question. Do we have a punch list, like, that's official? I, when I came to the school, I believe, to go, when you walk into the front entrance, all the tiles are coming up because it's being leaked on. I just, if we have something that maybe we can see to make sure that everything, that, there seems to be a lot of leaks in this building?
We do have a punch list.
Do we have, do we have all these leaks identified?
Well, when you say all these leaks, that's an open-ended question, because.
All the leaks relate to the new construction.
Our roof's rather repaired, as part of the repurposed, but they wouldn't appear on a punch list.
Right, but when I came in the front entrance, that whole thing is brand-new, and the tiles were already coming up from leaks, so.
I mean, the punch list was last, the tiles inside, though.
It's, when you walk in, right, if you walk in.
Front corridor, yeah.
Right, where the water is, right on the left, the tiles, they're cracked.
The last contract I received was about five, six weeks ago, the last one that I recall seeing.
And how do you get it? Do we, like, could we do send an email to all the people that work in the building?
It gets updated by the construction manager as the companies come through and finalize their punch list. So until he, until he's heard from all the contractors that they finalized their punch list, is at that point, do the construction manager and the architect go through and verify the work that was done? And obviously, if there are any things, things new, they do go through, but I do know the front corridor was on the last punch list, that company.
Well, Mr. Pantoliano has been identifying a lot of things, too.
Yeah, he's part of the process with them.
Anything else, Ms. Baccam? And Mr. Vashada?